I will call the November meeting of the Anderson County Board of Education to order. If you would stand, our pledge tonight is led by student member Keaton Cook.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Keaton. We have a special guest here tonight. David Coffey, who is a former Oak Ridge Associated Universities and Oak Ridge National Laboratory employee, is here to make a special presentation. He's enjoyed careers as a serial entrepreneur and as a state legislator. As an entrepreneur, he founded several technical companies in superconducting magnet systems and radiation detection and analysis markets. He also grew a stock brokerage firm to over 400 agents nationwide. His companies have won eight INC-500 awards as rapidly growing small businesses. During his legislative service, he worked to achieve the Oak Ridge Branch Campus of Roan State Community College and has a building bearing his name there, and the four-lane Pellicippi Parkway connection for Oak Ridge. He is now retired and living in North City with his wife and partner Pat, where they maintain an active interest in education improvement with a special focus on K3 education. Representative Coffey, we will hear you gladly. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate the opportunity. When I came in to see Superintendent Parrott and propose this thing to him, I sort of was apprehensive about it because this was an unusual thing I wanted to do tonight. When we looked at school data this year that came out, the most recent school data, suddenly it popped out that one of your schools is so outstanding that it kind of put the others to shade. And I said, what is going on? I had never been to that school. This is something new. But we all know that early reading is the key to getting a good education, being able to read and understand is the key, and too many of our kids just don't get it. It's tough getting them all educated in the right way there. But what we're trying to do is come up with something to honor the principle of that school. Like to honor all of the crew. When you think about it, you've got the teachers, the assistants, the cafeteria, the bus, it goes on and on. And it is a team effort, so it's very hard to say, who do you honor in this way? But what I thought about was, well, Peyton Manning was honored. Peyton was, he didn't score those touchdowns. He had the whole team working, and the only way they really won was with Peyton doing his job and the rest doing their job. But somebody gets honored. And Peyton gets it, and he carries it for the team. And tonight, what I want to do is honor the outstanding principal of our area of all the Roan and Anderson schools, and that's what the dots are on the map. We have another map that has all the dots of all the elementary schools in Tennessee, so you can see those two. But basically, when we look at what we've got here, we know that those that come from underprivileged homes are not as able. It takes more to get them up to full reading ability compared to somebody that comes from a privileged home. It has all the benefits, educated parents, not a broken home, et cetera. So anyway, the honor that we'd like to give is for that one school that has stood out. And it's not so important that Jessica could get this tonight. What's important is whether the others say, well, maybe I can do that, too. Maybe I can do what she's doing. Maybe I can beat her. Because next year, we're going to give this same award, and we're going to give one other that's one for the achievement above the natural line of where you would expect, and the other for the most improved elementary principal. So it'll be two $10,000 awards next year. And whether it goes on from there will depend on whether there's a response. If there's not one, okay, we tried, we did what we could, and do the right thing. But it may work. And if it does work, I think other districts will do it as well. I think you'll see it spread across the state. So it's worth a try. And so Jessica, if you would come up. I was interviewed by Channel 10 this morning, and I referred to as Jennifer and then as Jessica. I said, well, I've only met her one time. It's a little hard for me to do this. But what we have, this is a demonstration check, which you'll have a hard time cashing. Step up here toward that microphone. She's reluctant. Actually, she tried to talk me out of giving this. I told her no. She earned it, and it's an honorarium. It's $10,000, goes to her. If she wants to go off on a cruise, so will we. Oh, no. Especially during the school year. But this is something that really honors what she has done and for her use, and it's tax-free money that comes. And that's the demonstration, that's the big picture. But let me give you the real thing, which is not that very big check that you can't cancel, but one that's not cashed, but one that really can work. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica, do you want to say anything?
It's definitely an honor, and it's very humbling, but it is not me. We have a proud team of, like you said, teachers, the assistants, the custodians, all of them work together. We've got a P.E. teacher that does math intervention. We have a counselor in Aubrey, and they help with the intervention. We've got a great team of teachers, and so it is truly an all-hands-on-deck approach that we take, and so far it's worked. And we're just going to keep doing it, and we're going to find a way to honor and appreciate our staff with this. So, good.
If I can for just a minute, I'd like to take just a second to thank Mr. Coffey for this. Me and him had a long conversation about it when he first started talking about this. And we, he's been looking at this for a long time. It's not something he just started, because years ago, he had, we had some tough conversation about where Anderson County was and where we needed to be and where we were going and things like that. But I do really and truly want to thank him for what he's done to recognize, because a lot of times, those students, they do have a harder time. But one of the things that we want to make sure in Anderson County we do, it doesn't matter where you come from or what your zip code is, you get a great education. And Jessica, it doesn't matter what goes on, she never complains, she never talks about, you know, well, we can't do this, or give excuses. She'll just say, hey, here it is, and we're going to do it. So thank you, Mr. Coffey, for that.
Success starts at the top, Jessica. Don't sell yourself short.
All right. We also have another guest tonight, Ryan, and I've forgotten your last name, Ryan.
Cummins.
Cummins. He is a newly-elected board member from Campbell County, and he's here tonight to observe and get some of those boardmanship points that you get for going to other board members. So, that's right. Ryan, congratulations on being elected to the board.
And again, to echo what you're saying, congratulations to Jessica. That is just amazing. That is a life-changing event, but she's changing lives every day.
That's right.
That's amazing. Thank you. Congratulations.
All right. Glad you're here to see that. Ryan and I just happened to run into each other in Nashville, and he said, hey, I'm coming to your meeting next week. I said, well, come on. So, all right. Now, we have another special presentation.
Exactly. So, I don't have a gift or anything like that, but what we do every year in Anderson County is we recognize the Teacher of the Year, Principal of the Year, and Director of the Year. So this morning at our principals' meeting, and this award is voted on by the other principals and other directors, so it's really an award that is among the peers. So if I can say, we've said a lot about Jessica Knatzer today and this morning, but Jessica Knatzer is also our Principal of the Year. So it's one of those things. So I'm going to get her to come up and get that picture in just a second. But the other thing I want to say is, our Director of the Year, I just want to say a few words, it is Paula Sellers, and she is our Director of Student Services. And Paula Sellers works tirelessly, every day, every minute, on making sure our students have what they need. It's amazing that because, oh, well, this group was living in a car, but I got them a place to stay, or they needed clothes, and I got them clothes. They needed this. It's that other side of the puzzle that a lot of times, school systems just focus on one, but they focus on the whole child. And she'll call on the weekend, hey, I just got word that this family's house burnt down, and let me tell you what I've done. I've got this person, I've got this person, we're going to be there to take care of. And that is the heart of Anderson County schools, when we talk about every student every day. So not only do we, I think we do a fantastic job on the academic side, but I also think we do a pretty good job on the physical and emotional side. So Paula Sellers, she is our Director of the Year. If you would come up. And got a big, beautiful vote count this morning, and a T-shirt. There you go.
Only best.
And she also makes some great apple dumplings.
All right.
And I did hire this woman as Principal. You need credit.
All right. Congratulations, Paula. Jessica?
We will, Mr. Gillam Waters, we will recognize our Teacher of the Year from each grand division sometime in January.
Super. All right. No one registered to be heard tonight, so we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Motion to approve.
That's my.
Motion and second to approve the agenda as it is. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. The consent agenda has the minutes from the last meeting, the human resources report, student services report, field trips, expenditure, monthly expenditure report, our nepotism form, fire drill procedures, the accountability plan for the TESA, lots of sports schedules, the preschool bylaw changes. So is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda for discussion? Without objection, we will approve the consent agenda as it is. Did we have executive approval? We didn't, did we? We haven't signed. That was last month. Okay, so there you go. Comments from the chair? I do want to remind everybody of the Intergovernmental Committee meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00. That is Anderson County Commission, Anderson County School Board, Roan County Commission, and Roan County School Board will be meeting at the Oak Ridge Chamber of Commerce at 9:00 a.m. Kind of been put together at the last minute, so, but if you can be there, great. If not, no penalty. So we'll see what that's going to be about. We did have a good weekend in Nashville at the Tennessee School Board Association Convention. I got to meet Ryan and a few other things. Had good speakers, some great leadership conference and workshop. We were not very well represented. We went from six people who were planning to come down to two for board members, but Joe and I represented us well, I think, so.
Somebody won an award.
Well, we'll get to that. Alexis was there, you got to go to the Board Secretaries' thing, and Tim, I think he watched football in the. I saw him at the leadership conference. He was working. I saw him.
I saw him in the session.
Yes, he was there. He was there. I'm just kidding. I do want to thank the board for the nomination, for me, for the Tennessee, all Tennessee Board. That's a big honor. Ms. Williams was named to that board just a few years ago, but I happened to get the award to be the chair of that. And when you put in your application, they want to know what your board has done since you joined and what we've done in the last year. So I gave them a big, long list of accomplishments, and then the press release reads like I did all that stuff by myself. But just like Jessica said, it takes a team, and nobody on this board does anything without everybody else on this board. And this board does nothing without central office, without our principals, our teachers, our staff. So my name, I brought the hardware, it's sitting down there on the table if anybody wants to see it, because I figured nobody outside this room probably cares. But I did bring it. My name is on it, but it truly belongs to all of us, and so it was an honor for me. But that's our award that we receive, because this is one heck of a school board. So thank you for all you do. I think that's all I have.
Perfect attendance.
Oh, we do have perfect attendance. That's my other comment from the chair. Thank you. So we'll start. Mr. Carden?
From the preschool, we have Bonnie Freel.
And from Clinton Middle, we have Julie Nash.
Sorry, sprung it on you, Dawn.
From Clinton High School, Laura Cruz.
And from Lake City Middle School, we've got Jeanette Bradley. And from Fairview Elementary School, we've got tenant Tina Arizona.
All right. From Norwood Middle, Courtney McCollum.
From Norris Middle, Dalton Stagnolia.
From the preschool, Angel Hayes.
Also from Clinton High School, it's Kyle River.
And from Central Office, Vicki Carroll.
All right. Appreciate all the perfect attendance. That's not easy to get, but we reward you for that. So congratulations to each of you all. Move on now to our comments from our student board members. So y'all drew straws. Keaton goes first.
Yeah, I think I got some good ones this morning.
All right.
So back in October, we had an NHS induction, and we brought in four new members. We also had a group of CHS band students. They gave over 30 hours of community service to both the Norwood and Clinton Middle School bands. And then this month, our football team concluded their season in the first round of the playoffs against McMinn County. Clinton High School was pretty active for Veterans Day. Both AC and Clinton Bands came together for the Veterans Day Parade, and it's always nice to put aside the rivalries for people like the veterans. We had a pep band play the National Anthem and taps at North Clinton Elementary School. And then student government actually had a table. We had like a sheet of paper, a pretty big sheet of paper, and we had these stars that you could write a veteran's name on, and you could glue them on to the paper. And we hung that up right by the ROTC room. On November 9th, FFA came home with a district win in parliamentary procedure, and they came home with second place in creed. Both of these are advances to regional. Yesterday, DECA sent students to the district competition at the Knoxville Convention Center. And from there, we had five students advance to state, and we've got about a handful of others already going. And then coming this Saturday, our cheer team is competing at the T double S double A Cheerleading State Championship at the Knoxville Convention Center. And then in a couple weeks, boys and girls basketball will tip off at home on Tuesday, November 19th, against Lenore City.
All right. Thank you, Keaton.
ULC testing is coming up soon, so everyone's going to be preparing for that. The marching band season came to an end, and at our last competition, we placed third, the third-place band in first-place drum major. Cross-country had a wonderful season and emerged with a new state champion, Ava Moody. Flag football is starting up, and they won their first two games against Karnes and Hardin Valley. And ROTC is having their annual AMI inspection on November 20th, and they've been working really hard on it. And last Friday, we had our senior night for cross-country band football, and ROTC recognized during halftime in our game. And this Friday is the second round of football playoffs, AC against Elizabeth.
All right. Sounds like fall. Thank you all, appreciate your reports. Director's report.
Okay, just a few things. One of the first things I want to talk about is, as you know, up in our, neighbors up to the east of us had a pretty hard time when the hurricane come through. And so we decided as a group that we wanted our schools to take up funds and do something for a school. So I am proud to say, our students and staff collected over $8,500 for Cock County Schools. And so we will be taking the check to Cock County Schools. And kind of in honor of Ms. Paula Sellers, we're going to give it to Student Services up there, because we know a lot of times, Student Services doesn't have all that money to do stuff with, so we're going to give it to them and allow them to do whatever they need to do. And I was talking to their director of schools when we were at the state conference last week, and he said, you know, the hardest thing he has right now is some of their students and their teachers were 10 to 15 minutes away from their school, and now it takes them an hour and a half to two hours. And he said, I have some of my staff that, some of the staff, they actually live in Knoxville now, they have to commute. So when I talk to some of the other ones, you know, they really have a hard time, so let's keep that group in your thoughts and your prayers. The other thing is, I want to thank the schools, because it is director appreciation. And so what they do during this month, instead of giving thanks to the directors, they come up with a project. So they are taking up food for can drives, or they're doing it for other things. And so we have been at some of the schools, we were at Claxton Elementary School today, and they did a big can drive to put food back into their pantry. And it's just amazing how much the kids get involved in that. So I want to thank the schools for doing that. And just a couple of updates, the CHS concession stand, we had a meeting yesterday. All the framing is done, all the plumbing and wiring, rough-in are done. They're waiting on the heating air to be installed, the rough-in for that. And once they do that in the next week, the windows and siding will start going up. The CTE building that we're building at Clinton High School, they have, the foundation is done, the two rows of block around is done, and it's been ready. So they're working on putting the infrastructure inside, they hope in the next week, the pour that floor, they want to get the floor poured before it gets cold weather, because they have to use a crane inside there to set the metal building up. The other great thing is that Claxton, we're working on, met with that group on Monday. We have a tentative plan to put the whole school out for bid the last of this month. So we, it takes about six to eight weeks when you do that big of bid. The other thing is, we're, the project up at Anderson County High School with the soccer locker room, that is getting close to completion. We've got all the water, sewer, electricity into there, and they've got another group that's working on the inside of it. And then we will be rebidding the sportsplex at Anderson County High School within the next two to three weeks. So a lot of projects going on. That's all I.
All right. You want to mention other?
I just put in there, we had received a summons from Grand Oaks Elementary School, well, from a person that was on a, supposedly on a swing down there during the night or at weekend, or we really don't know what the exact date, but they felt and said they twisted her ankle and then broke it, and so they have sued us. We've turned that over to our insurance, TNRMT, and they will be taking over that, and I'll let you know what happens to that.
All righty. Action items from the workshop. The minutes are there, we'll approve those under the consent agenda next month. But moving on to the financial report.
All right.
Sorry, jumped the gun.
That's okay. The financial report, we went over it in depth on Monday night. We have appropriations, A1 through, 1A through 1G.
So moved to approve.
Motion to approve appropriations 1A through 1G. Any discussion? Oh, was there a second?
I have a second.
There was a second. Is there a discussion? All right. Not roll call vote?
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Uh-huh.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Mr. Gillam Waters?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Portwood?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Motion. And for transfers, we had transfers 2A through 2M.
So moved to approve, 2A through 2M.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve transfers 2A through 2M. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Moving on to the employee and student calendars, there was just one minor correction. Wasn't there on those, or did we?
No, we didn't. There wasn't any, there wasn't anything on this. We didn't change anything on the calendar.
Oh, okay.
We still, just like it was on the first reading.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the employee and student calendars for 25, 26?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to approve these calendars. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Next item is the LEA compliance report. It is lengthy, but we basically listed everything that we are compliant in doing, so we just need to approve that here at the board. So I'll entertain a motion to approve this report.
I'll make a motion to approve the compliance report. Second.
And there's a second. Motion and second to approve the LEA compliance report. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Next item is the Dutch Valley Playground.
And I just, I just lost the agenda, sorry.
They have gotten a donor that is willing to give them $15,000 if we will match it. They had a fundraiser, and as I recall, raised about $7,000, and they've got a little, some money from some other sources, so they've got about $10,000 plus if this donor comes through with 15. If we will give them 15, that'll give them about $40,000 for a new playground. The estimate was about 50, but I think they can do it with 40. Did I summarize that well enough before you got enough?
That was a good thing. Yes, yes. And they talked about they're doing a little plug in. Next Friday night, they're having a chili supper at Dutch Valley, and if you want to come, that's one of their fundraisers, and they'll raise money for that.
All right. And where would this money come from?
That's a Marcus question. We'll find it somewhere.
We will find it.
Are there any other schools that will be following suit with this, that will want us to come through with money?
We don't know. Usually, we've done a lot of projects in the county to where the, somebody, a booster club or somebody in will raise half the money and the board pays the other half. Listen, to me, that's a great deal. That's kind of.
It is a good deal, but I mean, if we have five schools come in and say, hey, we want that, too.
Yeah.
You know, that's what I'm thinking about.
We'll just do, do a little at a time. Yes.
All right.
So do you need a motion?
I'll need a motion.
I approve. I move.
You can approve.
No, I don't want to.
You move.
I move that we approve this.
All right. Approve.
The $15,000 for Dutch Valley.
Matching. Do you want to say once?
For their playground.
Okay.
Anything else you want me to say?
And we'll find it, where we get it. All right.
We'll let you know. We'll let you know next month. Once you approve it, then we will figure out where it comes from.
That's right. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
To that very concise motion?
Blah, blah, blah.
Any discussion? Not all in favor of approving a $15,000 matching grant for the Dutch Valley Playground? Say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. All right. We have two policies for first reading. One is our virtual education program.
Just had a, had a couple of little changes in there that we went over on Monday night.
Right. This is about communication, how we can communicate that. Any questions on, is there a motion to approve the, well, let's do both of them. The second one's the grading system, and this is adding numbers for the.
I got too much stuff up here right now.
I know you do.
It's too long of an agenda. There it is. There's the grading. And that was just, we're adding the four points for, to calculate a semester for dual enrollment, and then we're adding five percentage points if they are, for dual enrollment down on, dual enrollment courses shall include additional five points to the grades used to calculate the semester average.
All right. Is there a motion to approve both of those policies on first reading?
I'll make a motion that we approve policy number 4.212, virtual education program, and 4.600 grading system on first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve policy 4.212 and 4.600 on first reading. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Oppose, no. That is done. Are there other items to come before the board tonight? Hearing none. Without objection, we will be adjourned. Thank you all.